Okay, let's call the zoning commission meeting, regular meeting of May 7th to order. We have one missing person, so we need to appoint an alternate. How about Joe? Can you replace Mike since you're on the Mike wing?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So, we have Joe Campaliter for Mike Doyle, and that fills it out. The minutes of April 16th, anybody have any comments or questions or corrections?
Yes. Starting at line 136, does he see what we did with that motion? I think we approved it, didn't we?
Wasn't this the sign application that if Design Review approved it, it's in the center zone and staff can...
Oh, yes, so we didn't have to do anything.
We didn't have to do anything.
Right.
Mr. President, there was no formal action required by the zoning commission. It was a review.
Okay, yeah, it just didn't reflect that here, but okay.
Right. We should amend the line 142. No action by zoning is required. So who is our secretary of business? Mike?
Mike. He's done a great job.
Thank you, Mike.
I had one other thing more exciting, but line 61, at the beginning of line 61, it reads "Motion, Mr. Doyle made to approve." It should say "Motion, Mr. Doyle made a motion to approve application." So the little words are missing. "Made a motion to..."
Well, it starts off, it's the way he...
"Made what?"
"Motion, Mr. Doyle..."
"Made to approve that."
"Made a motion."
Yeah.
I agree with you, Bruce.
Let's go down to the next one.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Okay, any other comments or corrections? They have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
By Joe, second. By Donna.
Sure, I don't like Donna.
Who's doing it?
I do.
Kevin did.
Kevin did.
Okay. Kevin or Donna?
Mm-hmm, Kevin.
Kevin.
Kevin, okay, by Kevin, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-nothing. Minutes are approved as amended. Okay, the next item of business, we have no public hearings. We have application 1817 of Douglas Hope, dentist, owner for a site plan amendment on Eight Plank Hill Road.
(inaudible) application 18-17, you have a letter, please. Motion, that motion was formatted in a very good manner based on a review of the application there from my office in Simsbury Center Code. It is for conversion of office space to a residential unit or rental unit on the second floor of the...
Right, does anyone have any comments on this application? So I want to make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Motion to approve application 1817 of Douglas Hope, owner for a site plan amendment for Eight Plank Hill Road to create a residential unit on the second floor. The motion, wait a minute. The motion to approve application 1817 to permit the conversion of the upstairs office space to a residential unit per plan submitted to the zoning commission as part of the application.
Second.
Second by Kevin, your question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-nothing. Okay. Application 1818 of Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero Design for Stop &amp; Shop facade improvements. We have a situation with Design Review, made some comments at their previous meeting. The applicant came back with some changes, but Design Review did not have a quorum tonight. Staff's recommendation is...
Mr. Chairman, with regards to this application, as Mr. Ryan has stated tonight, Design Review, Matt, at their previous meeting, asked the applicant to make some revisions. Some of those revisions were incorporated into new renderings that they intended to go over with Design Review tonight, however, Design Review did not meet. They meet again in two weeks. This application has only been in front of the commissions now for three weeks, so it would be five weeks, and it's only been, if you table, it'll only be five weeks because we have an extra week in April with the fifth Monday. So again, staff's recommendation would be to allow Design Review at least a two-week leeway to review the revisions and make any recommendations. So staff's recommendation in writing is to table this evening. And know that Matt Whitmer is here from Phase Zero to go over his plans tonight, talk about the interior renovations, as well as their proposed exterior renovation.
Okay. Matt?
Thank you. Yes, for the record, I'm Matt Whitmer from Phase Zero Architects, and we've been working with Stop &amp; Shop now for a bit on their upcoming renovations at Simsbury. Some of you at the shop this year, they know that those renovations are actually taking place right now. This project has already begun on the interior, and as you can imagine, we're anxious to move things forward. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the existing and the proposed on the interior, but I do want to let you folks know, it is extensive. You're going to see a lot of changes at the store. For one thing, we're adding a coffee shop here, doing a lot with pre-prepared foods, expanding that area, refreshing the deli, expanding and refreshing the fresh fruit area. The bottle room, where you do your bottle returns, is actually going to be moved to the other end of the store for a refreshed and new purpose bakery area. We'll still have the bakery, but it'll be a little different in the way you interface with the bakery. The bottle area itself is going to be certainly a lot nicer than what's there now, and we have done many returns, certainly got a big improvement. The store itself will be getting new flooring, new ceilings, some new gondolas. There's going to be changes in the seafood section over here, some of the meats are certainly going to be changed. Customer service desk, even the checkout area is going to be moved around and refreshed and new POS stations. And also, the entry guested booths themselves are going to be changed. One of the things that Stop &amp; Shop is excited about is some of the P-Pod that you've probably seen, their trucks coming around doing deliveries. What they'll be doing at this store as well is adding some lockers on the outside, so that when, if you want, you can call and have somebody pick from the store and actually have your food, whatever your grocery list is, available within an hour and a half, two hours, and you can come to one of the lockers and just take your food out of the locker prepaid, and then off you go. So, a lot of changes, all pretty exciting, I think, all pretty positive for a store that certainly was, maybe some of you would imagine was certainly in need of some refreshing and some updates. As part of this change, there's also some significant changes to the exterior going on. This is the existing exterior, which was called, as you will, their barn prototype. Whether it looked like a barn or not is arguable, but certainly, this is the way it was laid out. They had some windows here, they kind of had a focal point in the center, which was not the doors. It was a canopy on either end, where you would enter into an entrance point here and an entrance point here. And of course, this is the existing bottle shop area. They're creating a new entry, new windows for the coffee shop, so that it'll have its own entrance exit. The entrance points will remain the same. The bottle return is going to be over at this end now. The exterior is going to be completely removed and refreshed, new asphalt shingles, new decorative elements on the existing canopy to brighten that area up. They're also punching these new windows inside to bring much more of a focus into the store in these areas. Some of these areas, we just can't do because there's a people's bank there and some other elements, so that's going to be spandrel glass, but it'll still look like the entrance or rather shop windows, as you'd imagine, too. The exterior itself, you can see how that's changing. We do have a canopy element over here. The existing Stop &amp; Shop signage is actually going to be removed. After construction, it's going to be reinstalled, so that's the same signage that's there today, along with the signage on the canopies. We have a kind of a light screen, if you will, here, that's basically wood tone strips, aluminum strips that will cover the windows. And then we have some exterior lighting, sconces that shine down, that will shine some light down along the building, but also help to really enliven this area, which, if you shop there now, is pretty dead. So it certainly looks a lot nicer facade in general. This is the prototype. This is actually a Giant store, that's in Glenburn in Maryland. I wanted to show you this a little bit because it gives you an idea of some of the elements you can see as they come together. This is the existing Simsbury elevations of what's there. So, you know, you'll notice that the prototype I'll put down here does have some differences with what's done here. We actually started meeting with Design Review informally, I think back in the beginning of March, and we have about four or five meetings, both informally and then the formal meeting that Jamie mentioned. And there's been a lot of changes to what was originally shown on this facade. A lot of changes that happened in the canopy themselves, that bring a lot more articulation back, bring some colors back in. Design Review did note the two-tone gray, how it looks like a Lego motif, so that they asked that, you know, we could eliminate that, maybe not have the building look so grab, but, you know, do something that's more monochromatic in this area, or this area. So we've changed that. We've also changed the cap on the building, maybe look a little bit more traditional. There was a tan shingle on here before. We did make a gray shingle, which seems to be more in keeping. All good comments for Design Review, all good comments that we've taken to heart and, you know, made modifications based on their feedback. As I mentioned, we are renovating the interior of the store right now. The idea is that the exterior of the store would be keeping on a similar schedule. It's certainly our hope to meet with Design Review again tonight. And we've made some improvements based on their comments, and we were pretty excited to show this because I think we're, you know, we're there, we're at a good place. So I'm really asking that, at this point, we can keep the process moving along, allow the facade to be built at the same time as the store interior, so that both can be completed when the store has its grand opening. So, it's a quick process, there's a lot of work ahead, but staff and Travis are really excited about it. It'll be a totally new store, and I think it's nice to see happening in this application.
What's your schedule for opening?
We're looking at early August, which, when you think about it, to do the architectural design drawings and get the exterior permitted and get that moving, it's a lot of work in a short amount of time. The interior does have a building permit, so they are doing the work now. The interior is a little more involved, so, you know, certainly, it's tracking where it needs to be, but there's a lot of concern that the exterior is falling behind based on the amount of work that's being proposed. Are there any questions, thoughts or comments?
Looks great.
Yeah, it's nice.
I think it does, too. It'll be a nice improvement.
So the question is, do we overrule the Design Review, or do we wait two weeks? What do you think?
I think our guidance was to table it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, staff's recommendation is to table it for two weeks. You do meet in those two weeks. Again, Design Review had some concerns about the center portion of the facade and potentially wanted to weigh in on that. Staff has left that decision-making up to them with regards to what they feel meets the design guidelines that the town has. Again, it's a potential two-week delay. I think if the Design Review Commission does not have a quorum in two weeks, I think you're probably well within your right to move forward after having two consecutive meetings without a quorum, but potentially a two-week delay has some merits associated with it. Staff does have two potentially quick questions. Just, there are some sconces proposed on the building that have uplighting and downlighting. I had a quick conversation with Phase Zero today with the understanding that they can modify those to not uplight and only downlight on those. That would be contrary to our design guidelines. And the second is, we noticed on sheet 513 that it calls for a gray illuminated panel. I don't know if that is a call, how mistake, or there is such a thing as a dark gray illuminated panel and a light gray illuminated panel.
Where?
On the center building facade.
So, that's actually the name of the brand of the Nicheo panel, so it's not that the panel is actually lights up, there's a piece of it. Unfortunately, it's somebody being clever with the naming of the product, but it's actually a concrete panel, so to call it...
We were just looking for clarification.
Sure. Sure.
It's not going to look like an Audi dealership, or, you know...
We have been in that scenario before where that gets overlooked, and then all of something else, and the applicant says, "Well, I just followed the plans," and it says illuminated gray panel, and, again, our thoughts were that it may be associated with the product and not the illumination of the product.
So, if I may add, you know, respectfully, you know, we are moving forward and hammers are swinging, so two weeks may not seem like a long time, but in a construction timeframe where we have an August, early August opening, it could mean, you know, all the time in the world as far as getting something done. I know we began meeting with Design Review back in March, we've had some great dialogue. The positive comments that I'm hearing tonight, you know, are certainly really encouraging. Is there any way that we can be allowed to continue forward with the project and feel good about the deadlines that are in front of us regarding this project? You know, certainly, we came here with the understanding that we'd have an opportunity to be in front of Design Review, and not having a quorum, you know, certainly not the applicant's fault, but we certainly would like to be able to move forward if we could. It is a concern.
Joe, comments?
No, I don't, I'm, I understand the fact that, you know, there's, you know, two weeks may seem like a lot of time, but I also, if we should follow protocol, and I understand Design Review couldn't meet tonight, but we should, I think we should follow that protocol. Obviously, if they can't meet, then, you know, next time we get together, we should move forward. That's just where I'm at on it.
Okay.
I agree. My concern is, we haven't followed this from the beginning like Design Review has.
Well, respectfully, I was going to give a presentation last time I was here and was told no to hold that.
Right.
So that Design Review could have a look at this, which we did. Unfortunately, they didn't show up. I would have been more than happy to give that presentation last time, but, you know, the applicant, I don't feel, should be held to the fact that this is the first time seeing this, when that was our intentions last time. And unfortunately, two weeks can make a big difference in lead times and ordering and construction, especially if the weather, you know, we end up with a rainy June, can really hurt us.
Mr. Chairman, just to respond to that?
Yes.
And again, it's always the choice of the applicant to do their full presentation, but even if they went forward with that presentation, the plans they showed you, would have showed you at the last meeting, are different than these plans as a direct result of input from Design Review and the applicant's attempt to address those concerns.
Bruce?
I'm in, I guess my sense of this thing is the same as my colleagues. I think we should give this two weeks to give DRB another opportunity to be on board in place and have a final look.
Tom?
I'm just a little frustrated with DRB and the number of meetings that have not But the last time, we overruled and did something, we got in trouble, so there was a little will-will. So, you know, I would defer to them, but it is very frustrating, and I can totally understand that. It's been multiple times.
Tom?
Yeah, I think we'll delay the two weeks, but we'll take action either way on the 18th.
Yeah, 21st.
So the 18th.
So, do you want to make a motion to table this until the 21st?
Yeah, I make a motion that we table application 1818 until our meeting, regular meeting on May 21st.
Second. Second by Joe. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any real way we could let you go ahead and do something without voting out Matt? Next is application 1820 of TJ Donahue Agent, Simsbury Free Library for Site Plan Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we're pleased to be here tonight. If you may recall, we brought this forward as an application two weeks ago. We made a full presentation, and it was very well received by you and by the Design Review Board. You have the drawings in front of you, which show the memorial, which we intend to put on the northeast quadrant of the Simsbury Free Library lawn adjacent to the Simsbury Cemetery. It's been, gotten very favorable reviews all the way around. I reviewed the letter to you May 7th from the town planner, and we concur with his findings, and we certainly accept all his conditions of approval if you see worthy to move forward with the motion tonight. We would like to be approved, and we'd like to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there any lighting at all? Any lighting?
There is no lighting shown. There is some lighting in the front lawn.
Any questions on the application, Bruce?
No, I think it's a fine effort, and I look forward to seeing that. I'm not sure what the timeline is, and maybe you could comment on that, just for general information, when you expect to...
There's one aspect of the design which is still in design. We have a meeting with them, I think, later this week or next week. We met with our contractor, and once we're approved, you'll see that there are conditions of approval that got, the little details got to be worked, and some plans have to be worked. But we hope to be in construction within 30 days or 45 days, and we don't expect to take a great deal of time. The glass components are fully designed, but they haven't been ordered, and the thing that is under redesign is the stainless steel channels that are going to hold the glass as part of a concrete base.
Is ready? Tom?
Right.
Ready to make a motion? Somebody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve application 18-17 to permit a brick walkway patio and memorial plaques for plans submitted by JT Willer AIA dated 11 April 2018, as submitted to the zoning commission as part of the application with the following modifications and conditions. One, prior to any grading and/or construction activities, the applicant shall provide written documentation to the town and the Connecticut Department of Transportation District Four that all work associated with the project that is within the state ROW has been approved and permitted. Two, prior to the commencement of any grading and/or construction activities, the application shall file three sets, signed and sealed, one Mylar and two paper, the approved site plans, as they may be revised per this motion, the Town of Simsbury Planning Department, which is required for issuance of a zoning permit. Three, a pre-construction meeting must be held between the commission and town staff, director of planning and community development, engineer, CEO, building official, and the building contractor prior to any construction, grading, and/or excavation activity associated with the construction or development of the site. Such meetings shall be scheduled at the mutual convenience of the participants. Four, final as-built plan shall be submitted to the director of planning and community development to determine compliance with the approved revised plans. The as-built plan shall include final grades, curving, landscaping, buildings, signage, utilities, which will include depth, size, location, and type, and drainage. Director of planning and community development may require additional information deemed necessary, either by the director or by other appropriate town staff, to determine compliance with all approvals. And five, in accordance with Simsbury Center Code, the director of planning and community development may accept or require minor changes to and deviations from any documents submitted by the applicant under the terms of this motion, and may refer such matters for further action by the commission if such changes or deviations would not be minor in nature.
Second.
I'll...
Kevin Beecher.
Just a quick, he read this, and it says 18-17, but it should be 18-20, which is what it is above, just for the record. No, it's okay.
Yep, thank you.
Sure.
Good catch. Okay, Jackie, scan it again.
It's all set. Approved with that, alternate application.
Any comments further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six-nothing, thank you. Now, we have new applications. We have two new applications for liquor permits. We were discussions with Jamie earlier. We'd like to set both of these for a public hearing at our next meeting, the 17, provided that the proper public notices are able to be placed in the newspaper. If they...
21st of May?
Our next meeting.
Okay.
21st.
Oh, sorry. You're telling me.
And if they don't, we'll provide for the public hearing to be on the 4th of June. The reason is that difficulty with getting through the town or the State Liquor Commission is a little, too many variables, and if we can rush this through and make it happen, it'll save a lot of anguish for... it'll save a lot of anguish for some nonprofits. So, an application 1823, do we hear a motion? Set a public hearing. The 7th and the 21st of May, provided that the current properly publishes the notice. Otherwise, it will be on the 6th of June.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we, on application 1823 of Marshall Epstein, Rose Hill Farm, that we set a public hearing for our next meeting on May 21st. If the notice is properly, if the hearing is properly noticed, otherwise, set it for June 4th.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, can we do the same thing for...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, regarding application 1824 of Ferg Jansen, agent, Town of Simsbury owner, for special exception, I move that the public hearing be set for May 21st if the public hearing is properly noticed, otherwise, at our meeting on June 4th.
Second, again.
Second by Jackie, again. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry six-nothing. Thank you. Application 1825, electorate has asked us to table this until May 21st meeting.
All right, Mr. Chairman, regarding application 1825, I move that we table this application until our regular meeting on...
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Close? Carry six-nothing. Okay, we are at the end of the rope here. Any correspondence?
Nothing new there, Mr. Chairman. Oh, wait, we do have one. Correct, we do. Moving along, Joe. We have a notice of a EDC meeting. Comment? This should be in your hearing.
Correct.
National disasters.
And then we have a notice of a workshop with the economic development committee.
Yep.
And we want to make you aware of that.
When is that?
Two.
See, there's two dates.
A week, 14th, 15th. So it's the 14th and the 30th.
7:30 in the morning.
Okay.
Yep, Bruce took him, just so you know. Yep.
It's okay, Bruce. I get blamed at home all the time. I know the feeling.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have two notices. One was the public input on the Capital Region natural hazards mitigation plan update underway. Mike has been tracking that on behalf of our department and will be attending a meeting in May also for that, which will be in Simsbury on the 22nd, so that where the Capital Region's going to go over their plan on May 22nd in Simsbury. The second notice was the economic development working group is soliciting feedback from commissions as well as residents associated with their ordinance. And May 14th at 7:30 a.m., they're proposing a meeting in this room at the town hall, and also on May 30th at 7:30 a.m. in this room. First one is structured for volunteer board members on the 14th, and the second one on the 30th is structured for the business community. But I'm sure if you couldn't make one, try and attend the other vice versa.
Okay.
And if you can't attend those meetings, and you had some input, and you wanted to shoot either Mike and/or I an email, we will see that the town manager and first elect may get that.
Okay. Mr. Secretary.
And those are here.
Was there anything on the committee meet, the subcommittee?
Mr. Chairman, we did have an opportunity to meet as a subcommittee. Mr. Frank also joined us that evening. I think we're making progress with regards to that. I'd like to potentially, we're missing one of the meet members tonight, so I wanted to schedule calendars our next meeting, but after that next meeting, I think we will have draft language ready for the commission to review, either at maybe your May 21st meeting, but more likely, one of your two meetings in June, for giving schedule and upcoming meeting schedules.
June is our original.
And again, we're actually down to looking at actual language versus just discussing concepts.
Your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Kevin?
Motion carries.
That's the most important thing you've said all night. I'm just kidding.